If they can't send somebody over for a particular shift and it's going to be out of policy basis. And then the business there, the Walmart is going to be picking up all the cost of that. But generally, it was my understanding that they would want somebody there definitely during peak hours. I believe, you know, somebody there.
This is anchors.
Is there anything that you wanted to add?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm sorry. I don't know why this isn't working.
Karen, I can hear, I can hear you now.
Okay, great. Sorry about that.
I just had another question on that. So when police officer is at Walmart. Police officer is at Walmart and he's on his protect and he could turn whose responsibility gets that up? Where's that?
Yeah, he's still, you know, he's still an officer of the force. He's still, he's still an officer of the force and he's still covered by our workers' compensation protections that we have through the. You know, that all the officers have and then all the other things that have been bargained for with the union and all. So all those things are still, are still in place. And it's much like mutual aid agreements, you know, they're generally, they just, you know, you stay with the department that you work for and you're hired by. You know, there's, there's certainly the ability to see how this goes and then amend the agreement. And, you know, after six months, you know, we can always go back to the well and say, okay, well, this is what's working, this is what isn't working. And make some changes to it, but that's generally the way that these, that these work in other, in other places as well as where Walmart cases.
Other question. Is that, do we have motion to approve consent agenda?
How would that be approved to consent agenda?
Is there a second? Second, then moved by trusty Thompson and second by trusty looks to approve consent agenda. All those in favor? Any opposed? I'd say that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item we have under new business is consider approval of reserve class B liquor and class B fermented malt beverage license. Application for Brown Deer Kitchen and cocktails at ninety eighty of Green Bay Road. There, anyone here representing? Well, we will continue to table this item. It was on our agenda last seminar and I would ask staff to reach back out to this individual. I know, but we can't in good conscience approve a liquor license without the person at least showing up to the meeting. Are they on the Zoom?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
Oh, has staff reached out and talked to?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Yes. What did they say?
She said she would be here.
This meeting after she was advised that what President Montgomery alluded to that they were not going to, the board was not going to approve. The liquor license without the president and she indicated she would be here for this particular meeting.
You could withhold consideration of this and move it further down in agenda if you wanted, just in case she might be. Like stuck in traffic or something like that, just in case she's late, late, but.
Is the board ready to vote today?
Sure.
All right, so we will hold it to the end of our opening, we want to close meeting. The next item is consider approval of a conditional use permit for church at fifty six hundred West Brown Deer Road.
Great. Thank you, brothers. This proposal came before the plan commission last week. It is a very small church that is looking to open in the fifty six hundred West Brown Deer Road office building. They currently have less than ten members and they are looking to hold services as well as some study groups there. As a office building in a commercial district, a church is considered a conditional use. And what we have before you is that draft conditional use permit in the packet. The plan commission did not find any issue with the proposed church, its parking or its use. It is broadly drafted in a fashion to allow for the property is fifty six hundred to host a church, although it is not transferable. So it would only go to the new Brown Deer Apostolic Church. Todd Moncassian is the pastor of the church and is here to answer any questions. If Todd's church, Pastor Moncassian's church were to expand and occupy a new space within that building, it would not come back. Or a conditional use permit revision, it would carry through to this other property, they would of course need to get occupancy for that space should they grow in the building. So with that, I could answer any other questions or Pastor Moncassian could as well.
Any questions from the board? I have a couple of questions. I know that it's a small amount. Your hour of operation, would they be disruptive to any other tenants in the building or had that already been discussed with other tenants?
Our services are normally on Sunday, no one's there and then it'd be Wednesday night. And it closes at five, I think it opens at nine in the morning to five and the door is locked, so. There's no one else that if we are singing or that sort of thing that it would bother anybody. Our service is at seven at night on Wednesday and it's Sunday sometime during the day on Sunday, which I don't believe people are in the building during that time.
Is this, if I recall in the building, this is the building where you go down the side and parking lot is in the back?
Yes.
And I know, and I know that there is a photographer in there on the lower level. What, what level is the church going to be on?
It's on the first level.
Okay, yeah, there's a pretty large photographer in. Large photography room that his hours are all over the place, so it's not a nine to five. So I just asked, but as a photographer, you should not interrupt what he's doing. Just ask because I don't want the tenants to come back and I, and I know that that first floor, I've been in the building. The first floor has a lot of, it's got a beauty surround and nail pharma and masala. It's not currently being used, but it could potentially become. But if your services are on Sundays and the evenings, it may not, I'm just thinking what could potentially be there later. Otherwise, if there are no other questions.
What?
Oh, if you can answer.
Is this your first location? And the first location in Brown Deer?
You mean, we had a church years before.
Correct. Have you been operating at another location and you moved it to this location?
I, I found a. Church in Racine and I pastor, so it's not the first church I planted, but it's the first time we are in Brown Deer.
And you thought this location due to the owner of the property or how did you find this location?
We just looked around and the big issue was bathrooms. So this place has bathrooms on all levels, men and women. And so we rent some other places, they made us have one, one bathroom. So we liked the location and we also liked the parking. There's a lot of, there's seven spaces there. And especially on a Sunday or Wednesday night, it's pretty breathtaking. That's why we chose to go there. And it was affordable for us, you know.
In your previous congregation, what size, we, at the time, did that company numbers were there?
We, my wife and I started it in our basement in our home. We went to the village hall, then we bought a building center. We went as high as maybe sixty people for pay and it was maybe, when we ran it over, it was paying forty and fifty people.
So. Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? And it's an additional use this for one year.
That's the way the unconditional uses operate in that after one year, we bring it back to the plan commission for a review. If there's not been any other complaints or other issues surrounding that conditional use, we then go ahead and grant it a permanent status. And it gets recorded with the property. We can obviously call on that permit if there are violations at any point in time in the future. But generally, it doesn't come back annually after that.
If there's no other questions, then we entertain a motion.
I know approval of a conditional use permit for the charity, fifty six hundred West Brown Deer Road. A second.
It's been moved by trustee owners and second by trustee Booker to approve additional news permit for church at fifty six hundred West Brown Deer Road. All those in favor? Any opposed? I'd say that motion carries. Thank you, Pat. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is consider approval of plans development agreement with F Street group at forty three hundred West. Brown Deer Road for compact family housing development. Who's here for S Street?
Mid John for master development. It's the one again.
I also from ring up our contractor.
Oh. Do you have any other one? I can listen to everything you say though.
No, you can. Thanks for having us, Ben. Next, final steps here to finalize planning, got ready here to go through the details of the developments and what we've gone through over the last most seven months now. So excited to be where we are.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much for your time. I'll try to be relatively expeditious with this, but want to present sort of. Our thoughtful approach to the site and the opportunity before us and how we think it's a positive addition to the community. So with that, okay, just. Go for it. So what you see on the screen there for all of our projects, we try to establish a vision and drivers, rules of the world, things that we can hold ourselves accountable to. And for this project specifically. The five things that we chose to do are listed there on the left and then the vision statement is on the right. Or what we call our design drivers, what we wanted to do was maximize green space, centralized amenities being afforded to the residents. Achieve a simple and impactful aesthetic, essentially be cost effective but still look very nice. Number four, create clear inviting unit entries. What we mean by that is this. Product type could very well be one block block building with several doors. We try to articulate this out in a way that. Clearly depicts individual unit entries. And then we have several buildings across the site, so number five is creating a cohesive aesthetic across the site. With the amount of building we have, we don't want them all to be the same, but we want them to cohesively work together from a visual standpoint. So the vision statement is essentially that in sentence form, what I will read for you. Our visions for the Brown Deer and our garden style development to provide a residential community with centralized amenities. A welcoming street presence, individualized unit entries and cohesive, high quality design across the site. One of the opportunities available to us and one of the things that is a selling point for us is the natural amenities within the area. So as I mentioned, wanting to maximize our green space, we want to take stock of the green space opportunities afforded to the residents as well. And really try to bring that into our site. So what is on the screen now is our site plan. I apologize, it is very small for all of you, so I'll try to walk through this clearly. What you're seeing are eight buildings distributed across the site along Deerwood Drive and Deerbrook Trail. The redder ones indicate access points to the site with two access points off of Deerbrook to the west and then our primary access point. Of Deerwood to the east, specific to that access point and are full of centralized amenities right at that entry and as part of that arrival experience. In orange is our clubhouse building, so that would be that centralized amenity. Adjacent to that is our green space, so that green space is for the entire. Element to use, this is kind of a gated community that's available for additional neighbors, nearby residents to be able to walk through. But in that area, adjacent to the clubhouse and that central green space is what we have shown. Then kind of working our way across the site, I'll go into larger plans that you still likely won't be able to read. But the very, the buildings all vary in size from seventeen units to twenty five units. So the largest buildings are concentrated to northwest corner of the site. Along the east edge of Deerwood Drive are some of the smaller buildings ranging from seventeen to nineteen units. And then that southwest corner, directly north of that outlot, those are also seventeen unit and nineteen unit buildings. At the process side, we have three trash enclosures, all featuring high quality furnished block materiality. Those will also all be screened with respect to the buildings themselves. And utilities, we try to concentrate them out of the land site, but where needed, we are really landscape screening them. With that, I think I will move into some enlarged versions of these plans just to see what that product looks like. So we're offering four different unit types ranging from junior one bedrooms at five hundred and seventy five square feet all the way to three bedrooms around fifteen hundred square feet. The way that these buildings work is there's garage access available to some of the residents and then street parking available to the others. Behind each of the garages, which in this particular drawing are shown as the sort of white boxes with not any color. There are slab stalls behind them, so two stalls per resident. What you're seeing here is pretty consistent across the site with respect to efficiency. Looking at the plan, I'll call attention to the ins and outs, essentially trying to establish that rhythm, so this doesn't read like what are. And as I click through again, there will be consistencies as I click through. We didn't talk anymore, no. So fair with me, I apologize, I might have to go back a few slides, but what we're really going to be just working our way across the site. And if this computer fails to allow me to cycle through them, really the point of this is that each of the buildings feature a different concentration of those unit types. And so all various units are distributed throughout, primarily trying to get our larger two bedroom or three bedroom units. On the end caps of the buildings and then the import on there, some of those smaller units.
A question. So each one of those sections, they're all, they're all one building, you just kind of segregate them into different.
Yes, so they're all separated by code required fire ratings and what you're seeing is actually two floor plans stacked on top of each other. So this will be a two story building and the plan at the top of the page, those are the second story units. I'll kind of just try to annotate here, but it's all right that we kind of went.
So entry. Into these, is it from the outside?
It's from the outside, yep. So either you're on the ground floor and you have a front door with a sidewalk kind of landscaping out the front. Or you will have a front door that will take you up a set of stairs to your unit.
How many stairs you had to go to get to view?
Our floor to floor is typically eleven foot four. I can't do the math on exactly how many steps that is, but it's something.
Like twat?
Yeah, roughly, they're a couple of them.
That's bigger than one?
Um, yeah.
Nine, so that's a lot more left feet.
So continuing through and just looking at some of what drove the design elements that we're going to present to you, these are images of other projects. That notion of simple but impactful that I tried to illustrate at the beginning. Really, again, the product itself could be a big block building. What we're trying to do is identify rhythm and that and articulation across this facade. With high quality materials that will blend in and fit in with the area. So these are just example images. And here is an image from our central green space. So here you are at the center of that site, just off of that primary access road. You're facing southwest at, I believe, one of our nineteen unit buildings. So with respect to the material, materiality that you're seeing, these are all high quality materials with long lasting times minimal. There, there we go. It's there. Yeah, so here is that central green space. So you are facing southwest within that green space. You know, this isn't an extremely modern product, but it has some of the simplicity and materiality that we employ in those instances. Trying to go for something simple and impactful, as I said, so with respect to that individualized unit entry and where the unit entries are. For the person living on the second floor, this is their unit and their entry is indicated as part of that white materiality. For the resident living down below, their entry is within this stall. And that's typical across all of the elevations. On the backside of the building, which we could look at, there are garage doors in some instances, but there would still be that adjacent entry door for that unit.
I have a question, speaking about the garage, who gets the garage, the lower level or the upper level?
The lower level gets the garage. In some cases, the upper level gets the garage as well. It's, it's kind of, I don't know if I know the exact percentage split, but. It's really maximizing how it works and so that requires us to look at how we can get the garage to go connect residents to their units.
So the one that doesn't have a garage in that part, you have surface parking?
Yes, yeah, we have ample surface parking. We're meeting our ratio of just around, I want to say one four six. Yeah.
Yeah. Is it sixty six? The units have their own garage, I believe?
Correct.
And we focus that a lot, they focus a lot on like the three bedrooms and the two bedroom units, some of the ones as well.
Yeah, and actually I'll just, to convince to the site, so you can see a little bit more context with that in mind. So here you're seeing those garages with that backup stall adjacent to it.
There's a little delay.
Uh, yeah.
I talk quicker than technology.
So here you're seeing that the actual unit we were just looking at. And so in this instance, for example, this would be, I believe, a three bedroom unit and you can see that they're getting access to that garage. There's also three parking stalls here that would likely go to the unit that requires that stair access that does not have a garage. So in every instance, we're counting for resident parking, otherwise it will be these right up. So I'll go back to the graphics and continue unless there's any plans, plant questions or questions that site context might be valuable. And I know that the. Some of that mine, I think of the, in particular, southeast corner, give it a second here. This is a slide that's valuable for us to show sort of that cohesive articulation across the site. So we talked about eight buildings. Not all of these buildings will look the same, but they'll be within the same sort of colored families. So here we're introducing a darker tone product. Again, all the architectural, the nuts and bolts are exactly the same, it's just applying a different material so that, again, this isn't a site with eight of the same buildings populated across it.
Question. In between the two buildings, it's this light brown thing, which unit does that attach to?
That will vary. In this particular instance, that I believe would be the second floor for this unit. Actually, no, this is a three bedroom. So if I were to outline it, you would have. Unit down below, someone goes up to their unit and then that other three bedroom unit is down there. So it's split here and then it varies across the site in different instances, but usually the end cap where we're providing that larger unit. They're going to get that additional bay adjacent to it. And then if I cycle back to the previous image, you can see what one of the in row ones would look like. Really, this whole bay here is another unit module. So again, the wood look materiality with warmer color at the base, that's this person's unit. So again, the wood look materiality with warmer color at the base, that's this person's unit, then there's a staircase going up over. To that other unit, but it's essentially the same module. Texture populated across the site. Just go look back here. Rotate. Yeah, so I was kind of drawing a few lines to indicate and using the word module. What I was trying to demonstrate was that this particular configuration. Is replicated and then where we require larger units and where we're trying to diversify that unit mix. There are instances, to your question, where that central darker brown bay belongs to the unit on the end.
So each unit has either balcony or patio, is that true?
Correct.
Does the patio have a walkout like with us?
No, not exactly, really, it just has a walk-up entry condition and a landscape buffer to screen HVAC equipment. So not a true patio. Thank you, David. So here, for example, you're seeing that northwest access point. I believe what Katie was referring to is that these buildings are really mirror versions of themselves when they look. So each, each side of the building has unit entries. Where we're facing the street, there are also garage doors incorporated, but these buildings mirror themselves. So that we have a walkout wherever you live.
So the garages are outdoors, but then is there an entry into the unit or from the, okay.
Okay, so you're saying that the, okay, so let's go. Let me example, building two, building F two, the. Three bedrooms, low and upper.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so also for the most part, all the end caps that are large units, so you have one of the. Right one on the left, both of those are three bedrooms, upper and lower.
Correct, that varies in certain instances because we have to account for. Accessible units as well, and then there's variation where we're locating water. But predominantly, units are required to stack just to maintain those ratings going up the building, where we do. Deviate is based on an accessible unit or a water room. And I apologize for the little bit.
It's a balance between garage space and these modules, so three garages might fit under a three bedroom unit where. Two garages would fit under two, so it's kind of a Tetris game on how to get the right mix and rate ratio and the right parking support those units.
Yeah, so this is actually the exact plan, it's still loading, I'm trying to get everything to appear on one screen, but this is showing that example, so the. Bottom set of drawings, bottom right, that's level one, upper is level two, you can see the. B one and red outline at the top left corner of that image. That is an instance where it does not stack with the unit above. The way that works though is that that unit will, that there's a garage adjacent to that, so everything's stacked.
I've had a question, do these units have basements or just built on slab?
There is slab, very well.
And you get more explanation with trying to have a U shape of units and kind of camouflage the parking in the back. So there's minimal back, maximum street facing and.
It might help show just the elevation itself. Bear with me here. And that will allow you to see the front and back.
So you're gonna have a dog park here?
We do have a dog run that's enclosed with a four foot tall flat, anything like that.
That's like a bath too.
Yes.
Clubhouse.
Correct, yep, and I can kind of speak to some of the programs in the clubhouse. I don't necessarily want to go back to that page.
Do you have? That amenity in your.
Dog spot. That's a number.
Yeah, we got people complaining about hook walking the dogs. It may not be from that, maybe from Green.
Yeah, so on the screen is just one of the elevation. This middle image, that is the elevation shown with garage, so that's off of the sort of road access. The bottom image is what is intended to either face Deerbrook or Deerwood. Where able, the end caps of the buildings are shown at the top there, you can kind of see the top right, you can see the outline of water gas meters. Those will be screened by landscaping. And those doors on that top right elevation are either access to a unit garage. Or the water room that I mentioned that's required for utilitarian needs.
In your construction, are you, how are you addressing the issue of sound between the units? While we're below and next to one of them, are you just?
So there is what are called STC ratings that were required to meet to achieve appropriate sound. Consideration, again, that's kind of a checkbox either that we want to be able to rent it or build it if we didn't meet those requirements. Let's see again. The variation between the two buildings, one is dark, one is light, but predominantly consistent with each other.
Just thinking about the different styles here, because the entry is not in in a hallway. Those are typically apartments, this is more of a townhome or.
Calling it a cottage style or garden style, so you're not getting that you off, but yeah, it's not exactly a townhome, but it's it's similar and it's an elevated product. Compared to typical apartments.
First of all, good community feel.
Yes, trying to establish a neighborhood rather than. There are a few other images I think are worth showing that I. And actually, the clubroom plan is. Available here, so within here, man in office leasing, secure lobby, package room. Clubroom and fitness and then some functional elements such as additional storage, a maintenance garage, as mentioned, that dog wash. Some additional needs, you can kind of see allocated drop off lane and bike racks and then the patio railing that. Off of that green space there. And I'll go to with that, the images of that building. That building is meant to take cues from the residential buildings, but not be a complete replication, so it does. Help and have presence at arrival condition. There you go, so here we're coming in off of that primary access road from. Deerwood, and so you're seeing on the right hand side in that white element, that's where we're locating the leasing office. And some of the other functional uses to the left hand side is that fitness area with the entry directly at the center adjacent to that signage. So this is just kind of showing the arrival experience to that landscaping on from building and at the arrival point. And then looking to the next side, we're going to be in that green space at the center of the campus or at the center of the site. Looking back at the clubroom and patio extension from the clubhouse building.
Does that have all?
And supply, you know, whatever party favors they would like, but it'll have a full kitchen, kind of kitchen, living area. Dedicated to it.
Just a refrigerator device. I want to say the microwave possibly, but not a full kitchen.
Missed your capacity in the clubroom.
So fifties kind of threshold for two week be grabs, so that's actually probably on the upside, actually across the entire building, so you might have. That's the maximum, it's not necessarily intended to be used like that.
So you couldn't watch a soccer game there?
You could, it is intended to be used for that. September, you put the six.
For the storage labors, are those useful with purpose?
So those would be additional supervision for residents if they so choose, they would rent it for. Ross, have additional fees to have access storage. As long as we'll have garages, we'll have a full of access storage space, but not everyone does, I said that will access storage space where some residents may need.
What's the total number of units?
Hundred and fifty-six.
Is that what we started, that was last?
So we have in the agreement one hundred and forty-eight units, there are a few things that. We have begun talking about with Nick and his team, along with our CDA council. To update that development agreement, we would be seeking approval of development agreement tonight. We would be probably bringing back an amendment to that development agreement to address some of those little specifics that have been adjusted. As it gone through this site planning process.
So we started out with one forty-eight, but now we have one fifty-six.
Yes.
Even with all of the other amenities and the green space and. So what did we, what did we cut down, did we cut down the square footage in the units so far?
I don't think we did, I think it just happened to be, I'm struck during the monuments, we had, we did one of those smaller junior units. If you want some smaller units, create a lower price point as well. That's where that would be great, yeah. Correct, correct, because the primary ratios, we were like in the seven hundred with smaller units, we're like, we want just some smaller units just to create a different price point for different people seeking.
So what's the ingrained link to A nine, most of the models over there?
More of that.
It's similar.
Yeah, good vibes. That's a really popular unit, I want to say that's one of the units that we brought to the market, it's, it gets leased up really quick.
And only one of the junior ones has a garage, so again, it's a different range, if you want a super small mapping for a garage, yeah, that should be.
What are the prices of the rooms?
Very similar to Greenlink, we press into somewhat within Greenlink, is that now the. Thirteen hundred dollar range up to the mid two thousands for the three bedroom, the larger bedroom?
Five hundred square foot units, thirteen hundred, huh?
Right around there, yes, it's very similar to what we're doing at Greenlink and at A and all the other.
It's affordable.
Thirteen, thirteen to what? Mid two thousands, five hundred.
If you get out the other minute. In the pool at this location.
This one we did not do.
So they do have a bathroom. They do have a bathroom.
I think one of the things we love about the way Green had designs, these, if they're not studios or junior one, but you know, you have your separate living area and your separate living area. That's very, very well designed, but it came as a fantastic job. Yeah, so obviously, some of those, you can see they have a full kitchen, full bath and a separation of spaces. It's similar to a studio apartment, but better, because of that. And I, you know.
Is that your computer or is that our wifi?
It would be the fact that I'm on your wifi sharing to the Zoom call, sure. So if I would have plugged in the USB drive back, Karen's recommendation, this would not have been happening, so. But yeah, there you have it, so all of the, there are eight units there that you're seeing. And you can see all of them feature a full, full bath, kitchen, living area, and then a separate sort of relegated off bedroom. So it really acts as a one bedroom apartment with the size and cost of a junior one bedroom unit.
Another additional question related to the. Movement on that area?
Yes, so we've been working with Nate. And Tyler and Seth, but it's moving forward and we're hoping to be time to line up here. It would be a single tenant, assuming they move forward and, yeah, exactly what I heard.
I know they're.
I can say with that information being shared with us within the next sixty days, ninety day.
That's a great question, that would be up to the. Interesting, John, so we haven't had discussions about that in closed session.
The. The timeline, I know this is a mountain, it's got to happen, it'll be boring.
So, yep, so. This has gone before Billy Ward, the committee found the plans to be outstanding, full recommendation, they were very pleased with the design.
And the material?
As a materiality, so no issues there, they did come back for a second meeting this evening. Just to discuss some items that weren't really clear on the initial presentation, and then it does still also need. Mutification approval for the landscape plans, but this would effectively. Be the final approval for all the site plan and development agreement zoning related issues.
Other question. The rendering that you showed with the floor plan for the junior, is that in our plan?
It would be, yeah, I don't know that it's color coded, I specifically did that as part of this presentation.
It's color coded, but the actual floor plan?
Yeah, it should be in there, if you were to zoom in it, then it would be the same dot number of.
It is, and there is a document that went to the plan commission, so it does have the, you can set the building floor plans. For for each of the various buildings.
Yeah, we submitted every building plan, every building elevation, the rendering, they're only, you select buildings on the site. You know, additionally, we've worked with the North Shore Fire Department to vet access for their vehicles, that all is working out well, we have some documentation of that, that's valuable.
So we're noting the junior ones during the A one and B one building.
Yeah, I think our, our computers are slow too.
They're, they're big files, that's why I understand why episode one would be printed out, trust me, it's on page forty-five.
Other questions?
I guess I have a final question, heading to circulation inside. The funk coming in, I can go straight through and go right out.
Yeah, so the three points of access, you, you know, there are definite conditions on the southeast portion of the site. But whether you're coming in from Deerbrook or Deerwood, you can make a left turn and a right turn to get out or vice versa. And as far as the norm, there have been conversations about access through. And so far, that seems relatively agreeable to preserve that, so that would be an additional uplift.
There's a wayfinding signage also to get you through the site and some of the areas that if you live there and you go there and people aren't, see if you're not going to get stuck. Also, we even met with fire department to talk about where building numbers are located and everything is coordinated through appropriate signage.
Yeah, I was going to ask that because when you have buildings like that, people say yes coming in, they go down the wrong road. And will, you know, sometimes people want to take shortcuts, you know, you know your unit is in the back, but you want to cut through. And there's something.
Yeah, it's a condition where they, unless they draw over the wall. You can see. No, I know, I know. But no, as far as circulation, pretty straightforward, actually.
So our, um, ask tonight is to approve. To approve, uh, plan development agreement with F Street. At four thousand eight hundred west Brown Deer Road, multi-family housing development. How, how questions have you, everyone asked questions that you want? I don't see anyone, uh, with hands raised, so, um, is there a motion?
I'd like to move that we approve the planning and development.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
It's been moved by trustee Conson and second by trustee Grease to approve. The plan development agreement with F Street Group at four thousand three hundred west. Round Your Road for multi-family housing development. All those in favor? Any opposed? Eyes having motion here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now. This is a part of this too, the rezoning. Because. Consider approval on a rezoning at four thousand two hundred west and four thousand three hundred for Brown Deer Road, eighty-nine, eighty-nine, North Deerwood Drive.
You're, uh, correct, President Montgomery, this really goes hand in hand with the project approval, uh, for this, uh. What is being called Village Forty-three, uh, development, and. It was previously zoned business plan development as part of the Brown Deer Business Park, since we're obviously going to, uh. Multi-family residential and a commercial outlet, we needed to look at a different zoning classification to allow for that. The most flexible and the easiest change to make was to go to simply a planned development district, which is the broadest of our. Uh, our PD districts, it allows for residential and commercial to, uh, to be proposed. In the case of a planned development district, any new development does need to come before the village for approval, and so that's why. Uh, they were here for the site plan approval, and that's why we'll see that commercial outlet development come back to us. Uh, for site plan approval as well, so. The rezoning for these two parts will really goes hand in hand, without rezoning, this project would not be allowed. The last piece that's being rezoned here is the US Bank site at four thousand two hundred west Brown Deer Road, and that site. Currently is B three commercial, we see the development pressure in the area suggesting that that site has a potential to be. Worked and just a commercial site, uh, it could be mixed use, uh, it could be built in a more dense fashion. It requires some flexibility from some of the B three setbacks, and so while we were rezoning these two pieces, uh, for the F Street. Project and the commercial outlet, we thought it would be prudent to go ahead and make that rezoning. The same for the US Bank site, so that property is also to be rezoned. Part of this effort, we did hold the public hearing at the plan commission, there was no comments, uh, either in favor or against. The proposal, we obviously notified the owners as well, uh, the owners of US Bank about this rezoning, uh, there was no objections. And plan commission did recommend in favor of this, you have ordinance in your packet, uh, for the rezoning. Uh, that we'd be looking for you to approve this evening.
Looking at the, the diagram in our pocket. I see four thousand three hundred, I see four thousand two hundred, I see eighty-nine, eighty-nine, in this, uh, lip. What, top, that must be just a part of eighty-nine, eighty-nine?
Yeah, eighty-nine, eighty-nine, kind of was like a little L at the top there.
Is that currently under contract with that street?
Yes. Yep.
Cause I didn't see that on the plan. Or is it that the?
Yeah, that top right corner.
Okay. It looks wrong. I believe, well, this, this map is old, cause this.
It's got the building sign.
There are no longer.
Yes.
Uh, questions?
I just have a simple question related to the streets, uh, and we're talking about wayfinding signs, are there changing? Will there be street names or is this will be part of Brown Deer with numbers?
They're private drives, not named, um, and each of the buildings will have a building address. And then each of the units will have a number associated, so it would be your building. Uh, address works with the coordinator with the team to get the, the numbers appropriate, uh, where it would be confusing which side you're on. Um, it's pretty clear, uh, and the diagram supports that, uh, it's been fully thought through.
Yeah, so the addresses, trustee, it's an already, you'll have some Deerwood Drive addresses, you'll have some Deerwood Trail addresses, and they're. Building that faces Brown Deer Road, I have Brown Deer Road address with various suite numbers.
What do you think, Andrew, with Franky at all?
Suite one oh one, suite one oh two, suite one oh three.
Other questions?
So you put up these, you've done these projects in other places, right?
Uh, we have the, a similar product in that in Portland, it's called the Woodnoth Residences, uh, that's owned, uh. By Mandel, uh, but if you look that up, it's a similar product type, uh, where you have these types of units with ground on the backside of a staircase hung up. Uh, we're seeing more and more of this, uh, since we've done that. This is proving easier to do and also still high quality, uh, relative to your typical multi-family product. Has more than able to scale and feel, so we're, we're continuing to do this in other communities.
All development in Brown Deer that's similar to this is Deer Run.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, residency is very like.
Yeah, so the difference actually in Deer Run. You go up, well, there's a door, but I think there's a door in the top, when you get up to the top. It's, it's open, I, I looked at it years ago, my recollection.
We do have another product, uh, under construction right now, the street in, uh, West End, it'll be Emery, so that'll be very similar, um. With its own, it's free standing clubhouse, very similar mix, this is, uh, right now with the custom construction. Having everything wood framed and, uh, they'll be able to have units on the second and first floor as opposed to townhomes where you have. Larger two-story units, so they're even more expensive, this is a way to get the vertical pack for the more dense, uh, building type.
All right, questions? Comments?
So are any of these units, uh, designated, uh, fifty-five or?
Um, not specifically, no.
We do have four, five, uh, high bay accessible units, they're all accessible at some point, but there's five equally distributed into, in unit. Uh, direction and tightness scale to offer a range, they all have, uh, van accessible. Attached garage installed, so certainly meeting code requirements, a little exceeding actually.
Those would be on the first floor.
Right.
We do have a number here that did grow grant, this is more.
The Wooddale Crossing project.
Yeah. It is broke grant last week. Um, if there are no other questions, we entertain a motion.
Um, the motion, um. So, uh, I move that, uh. We approved the rezoning at four thousand two hundred and four thousand three hundred west Brown Deer Road at, um, eighty-nine, nine, North Deerwood Drive.
This is second, it's been moved by trustee Grease and second by trustee Woods to approve. Uh, rezoning of four thousand two hundred and four thousand three hundred west Brown Deer Road in eighty-nine, eighty-nine of Deerwood Drive. All those in favor? Any opposed? Eyes having motion here, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thanks. Into. Uh, next diagram, it's just a ten mile park, I can't see it myself. With what we wanted to, oh.
I'll, I'll, I'll in particular off and then maybe chime in, uh. So we did open bids on Thursday, May second for the ten mile park project. Our budget for the project was equal three seventy-five million dollars. Um. Base bid alone had exceeded our budget. With all alternatives, we were pushing in the almost four million dollar range, so we were far over budget. And clearly had to reject all bids. Um, so then we had to kind of go back and draw, but we figured out, well, why? Were we so far over budget with it or estimating, uh, or were there other reasons? So we dove into this and found that how we had packaged our bid, um. Kind of facilitated a situation where. General contractors were severely marking up the subcontractor portions of the project. Um, so what happened is we were gonna bid this as one single prime contractor. And so in multiple components here, you have skate park components, skate, specific skate park, our builders, pump track. Specific pump track builders, the parking lot was in this project, that is gonna be like your hangover and some of the work that you're building. And we had a building on the job, so that's gonna enter into this one of these GCs. So we think what happened is it would go, uh, confusion of who would actually prime this job. Ultimately, we did only receive two bids, uh, usually that's not the best case scenario, you'd like to see a handful, figures at least. And pricing. Um, and so what we found was, in one instance, I'll use the ADK bid, they're a building contractor. So they were submitting a bid, and the skate park alone was approximately a billion dollars. Um. When we talked to the, their sub that they were using, it's called Spawn Ranch, that they, these skate parks. Said, no, that wasn't like. He said, no, that was not hiring. Um, and so with that specific, uh, bid, the skate park, or I'm sorry, the skate park builder said, he said he submitted a quote. For approximately three hundred thousand?
Two hundred fifty for, for the skate park and then another hundred for the pump track.
Okay, so that means this prime contractor, and he can submit whatever he wants, you know, there is no. He doesn't have to take that guy's bid or anything, he can put whatever he wants on that line. He took it and he marked it up, whatever, a thousand percent, two thousand percent, and put a million out. Um, and, and sometimes the reason is they're not, that guy wasn't familiar with skate parks, he probably wanted nothing to do with it, he threw a high number. He was six. Okay, so we dove into this a couple of different spots, also on ADK's bid, the parking lot was about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, in reality, that parking lot should equal to about two hundred fifty thousand dollars, but, and we're seeing a massive markup. Uh, on the subcontractor pitch. So, um, once. Got into this, we are taking two point three seven five million dollar. We went back to the drawing board, we are still gonna look at some V, some value engineering, uh, the overall plan itself. We're gonna look at still reducing some landscaping items, and this would go to, um, this is Woods' concern about maintenance. And I would say, I echo your concern, and sometimes less, smaller, and then keep it simple, and then with it. Keep it nicer, and those are also easy things to add later on down the line, easy to plant shrubs and bushes. We're gonna eliminate a lot of landscaping, um, and then also some site furnishings. And those are things, once we see how the space is being used, I feel that you can add, uh, as you go. So we're gonna start there, and then there's some building, um, things that were, that Rinka is looking at to bring that building cost a little bit down. We're also gonna package this in a way to avoid seeing these subcontractor markups on a geno. We're gonna bid this into three separate projects, so the base bid, we're gonna call it project one. Project one will now include the building, um, that patio space off of the building. Um, they should be the nature play space and the basketball. Okay, so that's project one, project two will be the parking lot. Project three will be the skate park and the pump track. That way, we're now having specific contractors, so at the parking lot, you're gonna have the main buildings of the world start. They give you all their business, that's their bread and butter, that's what they do, and so we're gonna get a very competitive bid on that parking lot piece. And then the base bid, project one, you're gonna get your CDs, kids, ADKs, uh. You might, I can't, you're gonna get a geno, this is the building. And these other, the basketball court and stuff, those are all common features associated with them. And then the skate park guys, uh, that we found are very, like, take, they're very, uh.
Hands up.
Hands on and very, take a lot of ownership in these skate parks, apparently only a five or six of them in the nation, or two, it's reasonable. They will then bid specifically on skate park, home track, or shoot. But I think once we package this in that manner, um, we are very confident, and we're talking with our engineering team and the Rinka team. To ensure that the bids that we receive are gonna be, and the project that we put out on the street is gonna be within our. Two point three seven five million dollar budget. This is our last chance, so if we don't, if we get bids back now, this thing isn't happening this year, so if we're still operating, that construction will occur. And be substantially complete, uh, a little bit later than expected, probably in October, in October. Maybe some landscaping in the spring, but project complete this year. The rebid schedule would be, um. You're going to advertise on June twelfth, and that's when plans will be available to the public. Advertise on the nineteenth, we're gonna open bids on the twenty-seventh of June. This will come before you move in your July. Twenty, July fifteenth, meeting for approval. We'll likely start construction in August.
And we don't, we're kind of on time, on, or seven, fine.
No, we are not, we have plenty of runway for that, uh, we have for twenty twenty-six, uh. We just would love to see that space transformed finally, and so, uh, I think everybody's. You know, been very keen to see this, uh, vision come to life, and so we're trying to push that, uh, and, and obviously this. Really high return on the initial bidding was, was a, a bit of a deflating feeling. So we, uh, wanna try to fix that as soon as we can.
And I think during this, I mean, ultimately, from the village's perspective, why we bid it that way the first time, is because now we're just entering into one contract with one contract. So that was our goal from the start, does this complicate things, uh, a little bit, but we're still gonna have to have somebody like from the. Cooper team or some other engineering firm on site to manage this anyways.
So like a general contractor?
Kind of more like, think of constructions oversight, all right, and that was gonna happen to happen regardless. So they're gonna be dealing with multiple contractors anyways, uh, this, it's just we're separating into three separate projects now. Um, so I, I think though this, once we dove into the bid, that was eye opening on what was occurring. With what people were voting and how the generals were marking up the product, or the products.
Yeah.
Do you think those generals bid, um, way you have separated them?
I think ADK will bid on the, um. Project one equal base bid, yeah, I think they'll submit a competitive bid on that. Um, I think Vinton would potentially bid on just the parking lot. Um, there were other ready contracts, but I think Vinton might submit a bid to A D K for a lot of the grading work, uh, the base bid part. I don't think Vinton will prime that base bid. There's no way that they're going to, they're priming the project to or submit as.
We're expecting to see a lot more bidders for, for each aspect of this project. And I think not only will that competitive nature drive down the bids, it also will take away some of the mystery, I think, that was leading these initial two respondents to kind of sandbag their numbers. You know, they just didn't know. And so anytime you don't know something, you just make up thoughts that's really high just to cover yourself because you could run into all sorts of variables that could throw your prices really high. And so now we're going to target people who have had their specialties. And so that should really eliminate that sandbag.
We're going to put in one more safeguard that we're still kicking around. Um, and that is adding an alternate bid to the base bid. This isn't going to take anything away from the base bid. It would be extra to it. Um, it would be a pickleball court in play, which would replace the skate park. If the skate park still comes in way too hot. We're a little concerned with some of the skate park stuff, but we're, we're diving into that a little bit. Hopefully, um, uh, fine tune exactly what the skate park features are and keep this building.
It's still one of the more classier items is, it's been kind of one of the, the, the pieces that we focused on and having in the project. But, uh, at the end of the day, if it's the difference between, uh, you know, the project going forward or not, uh, by saving what's likely to be a couple hundred thousand dollars difference in doing two pickleball courts versus the skate plaza, uh, then that's something I think we need to look at very seriously.
So we're kind of studying that right now to see how viable of an option that is. But in general, how I describe those three projects, that, that's what you'll see available to contractors, uh, June twelfth.
The kids may not be too happy.
Yeah.
Would these be indoor pickleball courts?
No.
You would appeal to a total different demographic.
Yes.
But there's a demand for both.
The priority is still to make the skate park. I mean, that, that's where we're operating under, this is just something we want to have in our back pocket just in case. But priority is to, yeah, make it skate.
Any questions?
Yes.
Yeah, I disagree. I agree with you. I think that's a good rule to kind of break it out. Uh, I guess when it comes to capacity within Village, is that going to fall on you to help manage this project or who?
You're going to follow. So somewhat, yes, um, but no. So what I was kind of describing is we're going to have to hire a construction, like, per site personnel there or an inspector. And that typically would come from like an engineering firm or something because there's so many moving parts to this. So we're kind of need someone else to like, I think, out there to run this job and have their daily rewards. They're going to be measuring quantities and there's so many different things happening. Yeah, we'll be involved, but, uh, more than arms length or like when, when needed, I'm out there.
And that's, I won't be able to sit out there. And that's factored into the budget. It is. So, you know, we're looking at the cost of construction, but we're also adding in, we're going to need some survey work. We're going to need this outside project management, uh, element as well. Other questions?
I have.
Yes.
I have one. So, um, I got the opportunity to walk through Heart Park, um, last week and they have, uh, uh, so I started getting excited about this project. I kept thinking about all the time because they have a skate park, they have, um, you know, a playground and, you know, a lot of these things, but, um, and it's well maintained. So have we thought about how we do the maintenance? Like, would it'll be public works staff having to do that? And we have to hire more people or how?
No, it'll be in our additional grass point operation. You might end up with a couple of extra summer kids, but yeah, it's, it's grassing.
What, I mean, what about maintenance of the, the junior building for bathroom?
So, yep, that would, uh, park and rec. Ballpark, that's park and rec staff, so they have summer staff that takes care of bathrooms. Sherry has a bathroom, the, uh, the child's, I mean, these are, uh, easier positions to fill in the summer fifteen dollar hour jobs. For college kids. Got three of them that started, but they're not on board right now. Great. Got two more coming on June. No, yeah, public works.
Okay. Other comments or questions? This is just a discussion item, so there's no, uh, action we need to take at this point. So we will move to, uh, I have an F. Consider approval of contract award for twenty twenty four water main relay project on most sixty first street of Glitter Ridge. To Tower Avenue.
Sort of intentional for the watering ability on this one, but there is a portion of public works, work items as well. Uh, water commission approved this earlier this month. Uh, Works Committee met last week and recommended approval of this contract and, and as well. Uh, this is our annual water main relay project. This year's project is over on sixty first street, between Glitter Ridge and Tower. You will hear this stretch, uh, of at least two more times from me and two other separate projects because water main relay coincides with what I call our coordinated project. So Public Works will also be doing the reditching and the culver replacements over here. We'll prove that at a future meeting. And, uh, this will be a part of our roadway repaving program, which we will, yeah, our June meeting. Um, and so they're replacing the old cast iron water main with new eight inch P B C. Um, we are replacing all of the water services from main to the curb stop. And then in addition, we're going to be replacing, um, uh, sanitary sewer laterals from the main also to the property line. Is generally the curb stop of the water service. Those are kind of the main components. Uh, the water utility did include in their, uh, bid, there's like a section two that they have for some hydrant replacements and some valve replacements. They're replacing one valve and I believe four fire hydrants. Those are kind of at just some various locations throughout the village or in this quarter.
So it's not on that street.
It's not on that street. Yeah, there, there's some, uh, uh, I think we've gone off Hartland Avenue. There's one off like the north end of town. There's some various spots, real bad leaking hydrants. And then I think they don't need valve replacement. So we received bids, um, extremely tight bids. If you look at American Sewer Services, um, up through, um, I, I really all the way, uh, very, very tight. I mean, what is that? Thousand, four hundred dollars or something by, between U P I and American Sewer Services, that's, that's crazy. That's also very, very good to see, which means we had a good bidable product out there. Assuming all the same things. American Sewer Services is a little bitter. Uh, they have done work in the village, uh, many other years. Last time was three, three or four years ago, they got the water main. So they'll be doing all the work, water main, hydrants, valves and sewer level.
Other questions? And this project which are this time?
Yes, so, um, after we receive approval tonight, we'll start the contracting process, which will take us through, we're going to have to get bonded, sign contracts, and then it'll take us through like very early June. I'm thinking they're going to get started mid-June. Um, they should be done by early August and that is also when then I have totally repaving program start in August. Um, so once they're out of the way, we'll come in, repave the street. We'll be doing some of the reditching work, um, simultaneously with them. Maybe kind of a little bit towards the end of the water main relay arc pool and get in there. Starting out from the fourth of July to start all the culver replacements and the reditching.
If there are no questions? We see on the boundary utility manager recommendation uh, is to award American services, sewer services, uh, for the contract. But there's also recommended motion. Do we have a motion?
I'm going to award the I'm going to award the contract award for the twenty twenty four water main relay project on also the first street from West Glitter Ridge Lane to West Tower Avenue to to American Sewer Services. So American Sewer Services, anything about, uh, do you want to give it out?
Can you? Yeah, you can. It's a unipress contract, um, so you don't have to.
Is there a second question? Does it move by trustee Thompson and second by trustee wants to award the contract for the twenty twenty four water course, hundred seventy eight thousand, six hundred twenty four? That was all those in favor? Uh, any opposed? Has that a motion carries? Thank you. Um, the next item, she consider approval of the contract for the West County Line Road Construction Project from Railroad Tracks Green Bay Road.
Another bid that we, um, opened also on May second, uh, along with the ten mile park project. But unlike the ten mile park project, this one came in fabulously. So we're under budget, um, between Mequon and Village. You again had extremely tight bids, very good to see, uh, upwards of a million dollars or quarter, two quarters of a million dollars when they're that tight. Very good to see, uh, Always Contractor and we'll kind of dive into the cost split between, I was going to ask, and Mequon, that's the M U. Um, but the over, so this, because this stretch of roadway is under Brown Years maintenance portion. So like you plow the snow on the street, we fill puddles and then Mequon has a different section of county line. You know, rather than just they either have we are at, we do it in segments. Um, so anyways, the village is leading the effort on this one as far as contracting. So like the design contract, we pay the engineer and then Mequon reimbursed the village for their portion. That's how this will work as well. We will enter into the contract contractor and then when we get to the next item, Mequon will reimburse us based off of the M U uh, for their, like, their specific items. Um, and we can get down to some of the, something breakdown. I did butcher one of the numbers here. I have Village tool participation. Second page of mine, I have all my assessments. Uh, Village construction participation, Village design participation is more like four hundred fifty five. I'll just apologize for that, but we're still under budget. I think the budget for the engine design and construction was six hundred thirty thousand for the village. And the estimated project cost is over there is four hundred fifty five thousand, three sixty seven thousand. So we are quite a ways under budget and it's good to see. Anything comes up that is, um, unexpected on the project, maybe had to pay for on this contingency. And then the rest would just go right back into our streets unbalanced. And so that just means we would borrow less money for our streets in the next, our own site.
Other questions?
So do we have any previous experience with the new?
Yes, we do. Uh, good question. So always, um, always contractors, they worked in the village and I think it was twenty sixteen last. Um, they did the reconstruction, uh, Park Plaza Court um, that is adjacent when we were, all we was getting built and then that American Distribution, I think it's called. Um, we tore out that road because American Distribution had a lot of truck traffic that was going in there. See trucks always right at those bays. Um, always did all of that work for us. They also built, uh, Badger Meter River Park for us. I believe that is what they were for the year before, two bad background is for us. Um, they're, they're, they pre-qualified for the job. Uh, it's some ex paint and dolin guys left that hate, they were a painting contractor in their business and they've been doing a lot of work in there. So very qualified to do it.
Other questions?
I have one. Uh, Matthew, you, I thought you said we're taking responsibility for this?
Yeah. It looks like they're in here, the The village is, the village is entering into the contract. Yes, we are, we are, uh, we're the lead agency and I'll provide some clarity on that next phase.
So their motion?
Uh, so I moved that we approved the contract award for the West County Line Road Reconstruction Project, Railroad Tracks to North Green Bay Road and State Highway fifty seven to Always Contractors, I think.
Is then move by trustee Grease and second by trustee Hassan to approve the contract award for West County Line Road Reconstruction Project from Railroad Tracks to North Green Bay Road to Always Contractors, I think. All those in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? Eyes having motion carries. Um, the next item is consider approval of the memorandum of understanding for construction with the city of Mequon for West County Line and Road Reconstruction Project Railroad Tracks to North Green Bay Road. Matthew.
So there, uh, this is related to what we just approved. This is just now splitting the project, um, to Mequon. Mequon specific items, Brown Years specific items. The biggest Brown Years specific item is the sidewalk on the south side of the street. So we're fully funding that. And then, um, any like driveway paving on the Brown Years side or culverts that wonder, you build driveways. And we would pay a hundred percent of that. And similarly, Mequon would do the same, uh, their side of the street. Uh, otherwise the project in general is split fifty fifty. Um, this M O U does describe, uh, construction inspection that Jeff brought up. Um, Mequon has an engineering staff of maybe like ten individuals and Brown Years you're looking at. So because I can't be at ten mile park, clay line road and the water main reading all at the same time. Uh, Mequon graciously said, yes, we will inspect the project. Uh, so Jeremy, Dan, you know, they're, they're engineered tech, it's going to inspect project at no cost. So if there's ever an issue or something, you'll call me and I'll, you know, get it. But in general, Jeremy's going to be, he can track of how the project gets built. Um, we'll enter into a separate contract, which you'll likely see at June meeting, uh, for construction safety services. Um, but that is from an engineering company. Uh, the overall Jeremy will run this project from now. The, the cost split is in here in the M O U. I blew it up a little bit larger above, uh, this memo, um, as part of the bid, but like I said, that's, that's kind of the gist is if there's stuff that's on the Mequon side, like driveway culverts or driveway paving, they'll pay a hundred percent. We'll pay that on our side. Everything road, road related, fifty fifty.
Questions?
I should bring up too, uh, Mequon's common council did approve this M O U at their May thirteenth council meeting and also the bid that we just approved, they also approved that at C. And also the bid that we just approved, they also approved that at C.
If there are no questions, can we entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion. I know we, uh, approved the memorandum of understanding. For construction with the city of Mequon for the west county line road reconstruction project. Railroad deep or Green Bay Road.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by trustee Woods and second by trustee Booker to approve the MOU with the city of Mequon. For county line road reconstruction project. All those in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have motion carries unanimous thing. Um, the next item is to recess the proposal session.
Madam President, uh, there was that liquor license.
What'd you say? We, we don't need a motion to do that again.
Is there unanimous consent to hold it over to the next meeting?
And I would. Ask that to, uh, this is not a good, uh, example. Uh, responsibility. So we've listed this twice on our agenda.
Understood, understood.
And maybe, uh, it needs to be, you know, face to face meeting. Before coming back on our agenda. With that being said, thank you for the reminder that this didn't feed nobody up. So. It don't matter.
No, I'm just saying, I mean.
Not gonna open now.
They don't have. They don't, man, after this summer.
They, they don't have, they don't have occupancy either. So.
Anywho, yeah, uh. I have not just that recessed proposal session pursuant to Wisconsin's death nineteen eighty five one C of power and reasons. Uh, he deliberated or negotiated in the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducted other steps size. Public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons required possession. Probably top fifty five, you deserve. Do we have a motion to go into closed session? Is there a second? It's been moved by trustee Houston and second by trustee Owen and stuff. Uh, go to closed that. All those in favor? Motion carries and we will.
Um, I would like to move that we authorize the village attorney and staff go into negotiations.